So we shall now segue to the county commissioner races. We're going to do these in numerical order. I would like to ask District One candidate Matt Look to come. And my understanding is that his opponent has officially withdrawn from the race. And so I'm also going to ask District Two candidate Julie Brassdade to come to the front, as she does not have a challenger. But they will each go through the same four questions that we have asked the county commissioners to prepare. So we will start with Matt Look. And your first question is, what is your background? How long have you lived in Anoka County? Your family occupations, endorsements to date, and any connections to businesses? Have you owned or managed a business and so forth?
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. It's a nice crowd. My name is Matt Look. I've been Anoka County Commissioner now for 12 years, representing District One. I'm a 44-year resident of Anoka County. My grandfather was the pastor of the First Baptist Church on the corner of Main and Ferry. My father was a dentist on the corner of, I'm sorry, on Main Street in Anoka. And I often, when door knocking, get people say, your grandfather either married us, or your father worked on some dental work, pointing to their mouth. My mother was an ESL teacher in the Anoka County School District. And so our family has very deep roots in Anoka County. And that's kind of what drove me to run initially and participate and get back to my community. From a business standpoint, I've owned a small business, a printing business, for 22 years now. And I print for political candidates. And what these candidates don't know is when they get elected, that I'll be lobbying them down at the state legislature. And that's precisely what we've done. Whether it's human service-related issues, transportation issues, whatever it may be that Anoka County needs, we've been down there working hard for them. So I generally don't seek endorsements, although I am recommended by the local SD-35 Republicans for the work I've done in cutting taxes and being pro-business. And so it's, I'm very happy to be here, very happy to participate in this. Thank you.
May I do all of Matt's first for the recording? Okay. All right, so we'll continue with Matt Look. The second question is, if you are an incumbent, what is your biggest accomplishment?
Thank you. So for 16 years, I've been working on Highway 10. Four years as a Ramsey City Council member, 12 years as an Anoka County Commissioner. And people have talked about Highway 10 for the last 75 years at least, in terms of the problems associated. We've had four to five times more accidents out there than any other similarly volume road in the state of Minnesota. We had pedestrians getting hit, bicyclers getting hit, rear-end accidents, and everything that you could come up with. And so 12 years ago, Anoka County identified Highway 10 as our top priority. Highway 10 is not a county road, it's a state road. It's a U.S. federal Highway 10, and the state's responsible for it. But the county decided that our people are in harm's way, and everybody else passing through that may not live in Anoka County is in harm's way as well. So the work that I've done on Highway 10, as well as the work of many others, was to go out and find what is probably going to amount to $250 to $300 million worth of work. Initially, a lot of politicians said, good luck, great story, we believe you, but good luck finding the money. There's not $300 million anywhere. We didn't take that as an answer that we thought was acceptable, so we broke it down into bite-sized pieces and did projects that were responsible. That project is now, as of today, fully funded. And as you drive through there, there's a lot of congestion, so my apologies for that. However, the final project will be something that will serve our community for the next 50 to 75 years. I'm very proud of that.
Thank you. Question number three. If elected, what would you do or should the county board do to address inflation in a pending recession?
Yeah, thank you. I read the pending recession, and I thought, well, I think we've had two negative quarters, so I think we are in fact in a recession at this point. I think there's some that like to say that the jobs out there are high, but given the fact that we had a pandemic, yeah, you could probably say that there's new jobs, although it's probably replacement jobs. So from a county standpoint, I think our best position is to keep our taxes as reasonable as possible and keep spending down. And I look at a lot of people out there in the community today and their suffering. They may have been furloughed, they may have lost a job, they may have lost a business during this pandemic. It's a very unusual time. And so the notion of raising taxes on them at this point is probably not appropriate. So we need to tighten our belt, and we've done that as a county board. I think we are going to be very close to very low, if not zero, on a levy this year. It has to be determined as of yet. But keeping taxes down is definitely what's going to be important, and that's relative to spending. And I think that's going to be our focus on this county board for this time. There are good projects, but we might need to postpone those until we can recover.
Thank you. Question number four. Other than the economy, what's the biggest issue facing Anoka County businesses and residents for the next two years and your plan to address it?
So there's two things that I want to talk about. The first is transportation. As I mentioned, Highway 10 was a big priority. Our second top priority, or it's now become our first top priority, is Highway 65, right outside the door here. And as we know, a lot of businesses identify transportation as the main reason why they invest or call a place home. A lot of businesses on Highway 10, for example, said, we would never dream of moving out there. Our people are stuck in traffic the whole time. And so that has to be an improvement before we'll consider it home. Same thing with 65. Number of accidents we're seeing out there are unacceptable, unacceptable. So the Anoka County Board is putting a lot of energy into Highway 65, finding the dollars, as is the city of Blaine and others. As we all know, this is not any one entity. This is a major lift. Everybody has to be in the same direction, on the same sheet of music, to make these things happen. The second thing is connectivity. The northern part of our county is underserved in terms of internet connectivity. The county board is, we originally set aside around $3, $3.5 million. We increased that to $8 million, where cities can now apply for these grants, they can work with their dollars, come alongside their dollars, and try and make projects happen so that whether it's education at home, whether it's the new normal of working at home for a lot of people. As I door knock, there are tons of people working at home, a lot of people home, doing that sort of thing. So they have to have the internet connectivity to be successful and to compete out there. And this is something that our county board has to work on.
Thank you. That was District One candidate Matt Look. Thank you for being here today. We will now move on to District Two candidate Julie Brassdade. Your first question, what is your background? How long you've lived in Anoka County? Your family occupation, any endorsements to date, and your connections to the business community?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I am Julie Brassdade, county commissioner for District Two. I'm currently serving on the board in my 10th year. Prior to being on the county board, I served on the Ham Lake City Council for six years, and then their planning and zoning commission for two years prior to that. I'm a lifelong resident of Anoka County, and I actually grew up in our southernmost city, which is Columbia Heights. My husband Rick and I now live in Ham Lake, and we have two daughters, two married daughters, and two amazing granddaughters. For decades, I have assisted my husband in the running of his second-generation electrical contracting family business. I am an active member of the Ham Lake Chamber and the East Bethel Chambers. I just recently joined the St. Francis Chamber because they are new to my district. I would like to thank Lori and the Chamber this morning for hosting this event, and I do try to get to as many of these events as I possibly can.
Thank you. Question two. As an incumbent, what is your biggest accomplishment?
Great, thank you. I would say there are two areas that I'm really proud of. First, I was involved with the creation of what we call AC RED, Anoka County Regional Economic Development Group. It's a great collaboration that was started by Metro North Chamber, Conexus, and the county. And from that, for the first time ever, the county created a position for a economic development director. We never had that position before, but we do now, and it is really proving to be beneficial and help the county wide, you know, all 20 cities in our one township. Secondly, I have been a tireless champion and advocate for public safety and keeping it a priority in Anoka County. I chair public safety, and this is really a passion close to my heart. I have worked hard to make sure that the sheriff's office has the tools and the infrastructure that they need to serve our family well and maintain law and order.
Thank you. Question three. If elected, what would you do or should the county board do to address inflation in a pending recession?
Similar to Matt's question, inflation isn't controlled a lot by county government. But what we can do, and what I believe our part is, that we need to keep the tax burden as low as possible on property tax owners. That can be business owners, that can be families. Our goal is to allow them to keep as much of their hard-earned cash in their pocket to make those ends meet. We have been very diligent in paying down debt over the last 10, 12 years. It's now very manageable. So I think now it's looking at not putting any additional burden on the taxpayers.
Thank you. Question four. Other than the economy, what's the biggest issue facing Anoka County businesses and residents for the next two years and your plan to address it?
Like you've heard, Highway 65 is our number-one transportation project right now. I have been working on that project since I first got on the board 10 years ago. I've co-chaired the Trunk Highway 65 Corridor Coalition. And, you know, it takes a long time, like Commissioner Look has mentioned. We work and work on these projects, but now we're at a point, working with MINDOT and the city of Blaine, where they've got to the design stage. And now we are very actively lobbying for the funds to complete construction. And secondly, I would say the workforce shortage that businesses are facing is real and a huge challenge. We have a lot of services through our job training center that can be of assistance to businesses. They will take on trainings for different employers to get potential applicants, you know, up to speed. They do hiring events. And so I would really like to see that service expand and have more businesses call on our Career Force Center, which is located in Blaine. They are happy to help. And in these challenging times, they are really coming up with some very creative events to get employers to find staff that they need.
Thank you. That was District Two candidate Julie Brassdade. Let's give them each a round of applause for being here today.[817.41][817.41](APPLAUSE). In the interest of time, we're going to hold all county candidate questions until the very end, so we can ensure that we get through all the races and everyone has ample time to answer the questions. So thank you both for being here. We'll move on to District Three, Jeff Reinhardt. His challenger informed me that she's not able to attend this morning, so to keep things moving along, we are going to have District Seven candidate Mandy Meisner come to the front as well, and we'll do the same format that we just did for the first two districts. So we'll begin with the questions for District Three candidate Jeff Reinhardt. Your first question, what is your background? How long you've lived in Anoka County? Family occupation, endorsements to date, and your connection to business?
Well, first of all, we're going to correct it. It's Jeff Reinhardt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Everybody wants to throw an H in my name. It's okay, it's been happening my whole life. I'm glad to be sitting up here with Mandy as not my competitor. I would not want to be running against her. So yeah, I'm Jeff Reinhardt. I am the commissioner in District Three. So if you live in Linwood, where I'll be tomorrow for their family fun days, or Columbus, Lionel Lakes, Circle Pines, Centerville, Lexington, or the east side of Blaine, I'm your county commissioner. I'm in my second term, but I've only been on the board about two and a half years because of some short terms that I've been lucky enough to win. So I'm running for reelection, and this will be my third term. I have been in business for well over 35 years. My current business is a company called MnPharm. It is, that's M-N-P-H-A-R-M. It's a biotech company, and we make recombinant proteins for medical research. Couple of different businesses I've been involved in, developed and sold over the years. Background in elected office, city council in Lionel Lakes for 20 years. Prior to that, some boards and commissions and things. I'm kind of a hand raiser, so I get involved. 10 years as a city council member and 10 years as mayor, five terms. Currently, the commander for the Sons of the American Legion at 566 post in Lionel Lakes and chair of their finance committee. Couple other things, but I don't know.
All right, question number two. As an incumbent, what is your biggest accomplishment?
You know, that's kind of a tough one, because, you know, I guess biggest accomplishment depends on, you know, perspective, I guess. Last night, I was in Centerville, you know, meeting with a bunch of residents that are concerned about blue-green algae on Centerville Lake. To them, that's probably going to be the biggest thing I've ever done. If we can raise a half million dollars, we need to treat that lake. But really, I mean, you know, so I start the ball with that, you know, so I'm going to lead, you know, getting that done for them. But, you know, it takes a lot of people. From that meeting last night, then I go to a lot of other people. So really, none of us accomplish anything all by ourselves. It takes a team, we work together. But just to name, I guess, a couple of things I am proud of. When I first was elected, you know, we went to Washington, lobbied for the remaining $40 million we needed for the Project 10 project that Commissioner Look was talking about, close that gap. Works being done. Really proud of the new way that we're budgeting at Anoka County. It's, they're calling it zero-based budgeting. We did this in Lionel Lakes when I was there, really kept taxes down. It doesn't assume that what you spend one year, you're going to spend the next year. Basically, it challenges every department to improve their budget every year. Some budgets go up, some down. What you end up with is a lot more efficiency and saving tax dollars. From 2020 to 2021, we didn't raise. To 22, we didn't raise, and it looks like we're not going to raise our taxes again. A bunch of other things, trails and things that I've been involved with, tech hoarder, but I need more time to explain.
Thank you. This is the speed round the candidate forum that we're holding this morning. So question number three. If elected, what would you do or should the county board do to address inflation in a pending recession?
Probably going to get a lot of the same answers from commissioners on this one, because inflation is more at the federal level as far as, you know, overspending, because a lot of times that's what causes inflation. Of course, you know, there's supply chain things and stuff like that, but, you know, when you overspend and you print more money, the economy has to absorb that somehow, and how that's absorbed is through inflation. Inflation, a lot of times, people think is the price of everything going up. Really, it's the value of our dollar going down. Yesterday, something cost $4, today it costs $5, not because it has more value, because the dollar's worth less. And that's at the federal level. So I guess, you know, what we can do is, I guess, what other commissioners have said, just kind of watch our own backyard and be responsible with the people's taxpayers and, I guess, you know, keep budgets in line and try to run the county efficiently.
Thank you. Question four. Other than the economy, what's the biggest issue facing Anoka County businesses and residents for the next two years and your plan to address it?
Yeah, so if you look around, you know, that's, you know, businesses have kind of taken a hit over the last couple of years. And a lot of what is going on is not supporting public safety. And so I'm hoping that, you know, with the new sheriff and county attorney, that we, when we have criminals in Anoka County, that we arrest and convict them. These people then won't go out and bother our businesses. And certainly, we have vacancies out there. Lori, in the county, we've got 14% of our currently budgeted positions that are vacant. That's incredible. So if you know anybody looking for a job, send them our way. But that, you know, all of the businesses out there are experiencing the same thing. But really, we need to support law enforcement, we need to support our county attorney's office, and we need to support businesses. When I was mayor of Lionel Lakes, you know, we had Drug Task Force, and criminals knew not to come to Lionel Lakes to do your drugs and to do your deals in drugs. The task force that we had, they were, they would, how they worked, they would try to get the criminals to come to Lionel Lakes, but the criminals knew not to come to Lionel Lakes. We were the first or the second safest city in Minnesota year after year. And I think that, you know, if we support public safety, and I think Anoka County will have that reputation too. And I've got a couple other things here, too. Fees and regulation, let's not do that to businesses either. But anyway, I think my time's up.
Thank you. That was District Three candidate Jeff Reinhardt. So we shall move on to our District Seven candidate, who is here today, Mandy Meisner. Her opponent is not here this morning. Just for a point of clarification, because these two candidates are not running against each other, and for taping purposes, I'm having them each go through the questions individually as opposed to back and forth. We'll get to that in just a little bit. But for right now, I will be asking candidate Mandy Meisner, her first question, what is your background? How long you've lived in Anoka County? Your family occupation, any endorsements to date, and your connections to business?
Thank you. Well, good morning, and thank you all for being here. Thank you, North Metro Chamber, for hosting this event. My name is Mandy Meisner, and I am lucky to represent the new District Seven, which is Fridley, Columbia Heights, and Hilltop. So I have lived in Fridley for 22 years and counting. I'm a single mom with two children. My oldest daughter, I just dropped her off at Eau Claire this week, and then my son, who is in 11th grade, is at Fridley High School. My current occupation is Anoka County Commissioner, and I am seeking reelection, so I'm finishing up my first term. But most of my history is really community service. So that is really where my career has been mostly spent. So I've been helping nonprofits primarily work with gaining partnerships and raising funds. So being a champion of my backyard, that is really who I am, and I continue to be active in that way. And so I am either a volunteer or an active board member in a couple of organizations, Sacred Food Shelf, Alexandra House, Mercy Hospital Foundation, for chambers and business. I have been the last four years on the Public Policy Committee with the Twin Cities North Chamber. This chamber, I've been actively involved for a decade, but my longest-standing committee is with, working with women for the last eight years. Here, we focus on encouraging women in business through education and connection. I've got a lot of support with local city and other entities, but if you all share in terms of endorsements, is the Teamsters and the Minneapolis Labor Federation. And I do hope to gain the endorsement here of this chamber. And I ran out of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question two. As an incumbent, what is your biggest accomplishment?
So I mentioned that most of my history is community service, and this is really the experience that I continue to bring in the role of county commissioner. So I work really hard to change people's lives. A few of the things that I feel really good about, that I have brought specifically to my district, are things like having our county law librarian come in once a month, both to Fridley and Columbia Heights libraries. There, he offers free resources and information around things like family law, criminal expungement, housing issues. I've worked in Columbia Heights with parents, the school district, and our county transportation to create safer school crossways. And then I also helped to bring the first COVID vaccines into the communities of Fridley and Columbia Heights. These have been designated as underserved communities, so to bring them into the communities, that really helped to save lives in the beginning of the pandemic. I also am lucky to serve on the Workforce Development Board. So I've been doing that since I first became elected, so for the last almost four years. And here's where I get to study and collaborate across multiple sectors to build a healthy workforce. And as far as why am I running for reelection, in short, I am just getting started.
Thank you. Question three. If elected, what would you do or should the county board do to address inflation in a pending recession?
Super easy question to answer. Come on. So inflation is the highest it's been in 40 years. We have a workforce crisis across all sectors that the pandemic has accelerated. A lot of these things past commissioners have talked about, those things are out of my control, out of our control. But I also believe that there are always nooks and crannies to make improvements and to move forward. So those are the things that I always look for in county government. So a couple of things, you know, working with the local chambers, I'm lucky. Over the years, it is our small businesses that are the backbone of our economy. So again, talking about our own backyard, a few things that we have been able to do is our first round of federal relief funds, the CARES Act. That was $43 million in total. We allocated $5 million for our nonprofits and business sectors, and also provided grants for our local chambers. And because of the recession that we are in and is looming ahead as well, one of the things that I'm currently advocating for is we have about $100,000 of uncommitted funds in our county appropriations. So I really want to spread all of that in our small list of nonprofits and take that as a one-time grant opportunity to help relieve some of the stresses in our community. And as someone who shapes our $330 million budget, we've heard about lowering taxes. Yes, I absolutely want to keep our taxes low and a burden. Also, education, our taxes, though, is the revenue for us to operate. So I do remind us that our taxes, we need those in order to meet the needs of our community. Thank you.
Question four. Other than the economy, what's the biggest issue facing Anoka County businesses and residents for the next two years and your plan to address it?
So this really goes hand in hand with the economy, and you're going to hear a lot about this, have heard a lot about this, but our workforce crisis. So again, I work on the Workforce Development Board, and here is where collectively, we are very dedicated to build pathways, to build better employment and pipelines for the entire region. So that I'm really passionate about, I continue to study that. Me personally, as a commissioner, I want to see, and I'm working on, a county-wide internship program. So to bring in youth and our students, working with our school districts, our educators, as well as our staff, to make a win-win situation for our future workforce. And as part of attracting talent, I mean, regionally, how I can be helping your businesses are some of these bigger-picture things. We need to have affordability, a good place to live, good housing stock market, reasonable taxes, good infrastructure. So Highway 65 has been mentioned, and that is absolutely a priority, as well as a strong public safety. So all of these things presenting attractive place to live, work, and play is going to ultimately help you also attract businesses. So I'm always aware of the big picture as well.
Thank you. Let's give a round of applause to District Three candidate Jeff Reinhardt and District Seven candidate Mandy Meisner.[1709.52][1709.52](APPLAUSE). Thank you. And now a segue to District Four, if the two candidates can come up, Scott Schulte and Raymond Zeron. Don't want to make another mistake with names. Usually better than that. All right, so now we shall return back to alternating between the two candidates with the same question. So we will begin with the first question, which is, what is your background? How long you've lived in Anoka County? Your family occupation, endorsements to date, and your connections to business? And we'll begin with Scott Schulte.
Thank you, Lori, and thank all of you for being here. Thanks to the chamber and SPM for hosting. My name is Scott Schulte. I have the privilege of serving as the chair of the Anoka County Board of Commissioners. I was born and raised in Coon Rapids, that's 62 years. I run a small business on the corner of Hanson and Coon Rapids Boulevard that my father started in 1958, two years before I was born. I started working there when I was 11 in 1971. I have now been working there 51 years, and I've owned it for the last 24 years. I'm married with five kids and 11 grandkids, live in Coon Rapids, again, served on the Coon Rapids City Council for 12 years, and finishing my 10th year and finishing my 10th year at the Anoka County Board. So 22 years of local service and looking to see if I can do four more. Many of my current past endorsements, Tony Palumbo, the retiring county attorney, has endorsed me. Firefighters out of Coon Rapids, the International Association of Firefighters, 1935. Waste haulers consortium, St. Paul area Realtors have endorsed me in the past, and I'm working for that endorsement again. The Minnesota Chamber, National Federation of Independent Business, which I've belonged to since 1958, well, me since '60, Dad since '58, and many others, far too many to list. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, what is your background? How long you've lived in Anoka County? Your family occupation and endorsements to date, and your connections to business? Raymond Zirin.
Thank you, Lori. My name is Raymond Zirin. I'm an electrician, not a politician. I've been living in Anoka County, I've been living in the same house for 20 years. We've raised, my wife and I have raised, we've been married for 24 years. We've raised two children in that house. And I'm the owner of Raymond Electric. I started a business two years ago. Not a career politician like Scott is here. That's a contrast that I wanted to make. And I've been endorsed by numerous labor feder, Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation, and numerous labor organizations. I think I've ran the table on labor organizations for endorsement. And I think we need to make strategic investments in the county going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Question two, if you are an incumbent, what is your biggest accomplishment? And if you are a challenger, why are you running? And what will you do differently? And we'll begin with Raymond.
Well, I want to start by saying that the stock market is not the economy. I think we are seeing inflation right now, and I think we address that by making strategic investments going forward. And the one, the way that, what, my plan to do that is to address the workforce development issues as we go forward. As a Metropolitan Council member, I worked on the Southwest Light Rail project to bring the Building Better Communities program, where we, the contractors on that program, on that contract, agreed to hire from the program. And we partnered with community groups to give different folks that were traditionally locked out of construction jobs, give them the opportunity to get some training, OSHA 10, some workplace training, so that they'd be able to go to work on the Southwest Light Rail. I can bring that same strategic apprenticeship program to the county and address our workforce development issues by linking them to county projects that need to get done. And we do that by leveraging the private investments that the joint apprenticeship training committees have already made.
Thank you. Question two, if you are an incumbent, what is your biggest accomplishment? If you are a challenger, why are you running?
Thank you, Lori. Back to question one I missed. I am a member of this chamber in two capacities, both as a commissioner and high-ten service. Also, the Anoka Area Chamber, Ham Lake Chamber, National Federation of Independent Business, and the Coon Rapids Rotary Club. Onto this question, biggest accomplishments? Getting Highway 10 fully funded and constructed, as mentioned previously. Being elected chairman of the county board. When you have six peers that are your equal, to get them to agree to move you to a position of leadership is one hell of an accomplishment, and I'm proud of it. And then lastly, holding down the tax levy for Anoka County residents for over 10 years with an average of a 0% increase annually. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three, if elected, what would you do and should the county board do to address inflation and a pending recession? We'll begin with Scott.
As was mentioned earlier, inflation trickles down from the federal level. At the local level, keeping spending under control to keep property taxes down while increasing public safety. To do this, takes a tax policy from a local level. I think we can do that. I think we've done that. And I think we need to do it by keeping tax rates low, broad, and simple. But if we want to talk about how to do that more regionally, I think we need to look at our partners, the Metropolitan Council. I was a bit floored that my opponent admitted guilt to the Southwest Light Rail and the boondoggle that it has become. The incredible overages, the lack of oversight by the Metropolitan Council and that appointed board that's not elected, that they would have the audacity to not vote to audit the numbers of the Southwest Light Rail. And that the legislature had to step in to make that happen. That is unforgivable and untenable. I would hope nothing like that would ever come to Anoka County. If you want to know where to start saving money, where to be concerned about inflation, let's get the Met Council in check. Let's start there, because that's a whole lot of money. $3 billion is a whole lot more than Anoka County could ever spend in a 10-year budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three, if elected, what would you do, should the county board do, to address inflation and a pending recession? Raymond.
The pending recession, I don't believe that we're, we have a pending recession. I think we do have inflation. When we take a look at motor vehicle sales tax, those numbers are really indicator of whether we're heading into a recession or not. And we, those numbers have been very steady. People are buying cars. And the way we address inflation and/or make the economy grow in our area is to make strategic investments. And the way we go about making those strategic investments is by investing in people and respecting the dignity of people who are doing the work on our jobs, making things work. We need to go back and ask our individual employees how we do this, right? And inflation, we spend, we get out there and we spend money that makes our region grow. We make strategic investments, and now is the time that we get, we need to do that. 22 years Scott's been on this board, and 65 still hasn't been fixed. We continue to see a lack of transparency from the board, and I will bring that transparency forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Question four, other than the economy, what's the biggest issue facing Anoka County businesses and residents for the next two years and your plan to address it? We'll begin with Raymond.
Okay. I'm answering the questions pretty much all the same, because I think, I think where we need to go with the county and making investments going forward, we invest in people. We continue to make investments, strategic investments along Highway 65. We're finished Highway 10, of course. But we also need to look at ways of getting cars off of roads and give people options to get in onto the North Star. Let's go back to funding the North Star. Let's go back to four trips down and four trips back in the event service. And that, the reason why we're not running those right now is because of decisions that Scott has made along the way on defunding North Star and public transit. And as a board member, I will right-size that budget. Budget is a function of our moral obligations to people. And North Star is wildly popular, and it continues, it needs to be ran. It needs to be promoted. We need to get our, expand the North Star all the way to St. Cloud so that we have options to get cars off of Highway 10, to give people a second way or another way to get to work. And those investments always create more public investment going forward.
Thank you. Question four, other than the economy, what's the biggest issue facing Anoka County businesses and residents for the next two years and your plan to address it? Scott.
Thank you, Lori. To answer the question very briefly and then a couple of quick remarks, workforce availability, number one issue facing. You've already heard about it. I do serve on the local workforce development board with Commissioner Meisner. However, I was elected the president of the Minnesota Association of Workforce Boards, better known as the MOP. And so I will work in that capacity to repair workforce, bring about a new change, whatever that is. If it means undocumented, documenting the undocumented, whatever it takes, we need a workforce, and I'm willing to do that work. I've been on the county board for 10 years, not 22. I've worked, hey, I got the mic. Right, I got the mic. Yes, I've been in local government that long. You, however, served on the workforce development board at my behest. Thank you. You bailed out on me. Two years in, you bailed out because you got a Met Council position. Good for you. Much more prominent there than there is today, workforce board. Secondly, I get my fingernails dirty. I wake up every morning at 4 o'clock and open a business. I'm not a lifetime politician. I open that shop and I work from 4 to 8 o'clock fixing cars. Then I put on the suit, I go to some meetings, go back to the shop and close it up in the afternoon, because I'm a working man, just like you, Raymond. You're an electrician, I fix cars. I'm a working man. But I took it a step further. I'm now helping society as best I can in Anoka County by furthering transportation, by furthering things that help the average transportation user, not the 50 people that ride North Star. I'm helping everybody in Anoka County and the regional area by moving them safely through our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give both candidates from District Four a round of applause, Scott Schulte and Raymond Zirin. And we'll now ask District Five candidates to come to the front, Mike Gamash and Tracy Strombeck. Again, we'll keep the questions until the very end to ensure that everyone gets time upfront to answer the questions. All right, so we shall begin with question number one. What is your background? How long you've lived in Anoka County? Family occupation and endorsements to date and your connections to business? And we'll begin with Mike Gamash.
Thank you, Lori, and thank you to the chamber for this event. I'm Mike Gamash. I have lived in Anoka County since 1985. When my wife Beth and I moved up here, we raised two children in Andover. I was elected in 2000 to the mayor of the city of Andover and served there for 14 years. In 2014, I ran for the county board, Carol Ledoux and Scott Ledoux's seat, District Five, and won that. And now I'm at the end of my second term as a county commissioner. And it's been great to serve not only the people of Andover, but also the people of Coon Rapids and Fridley. The new district is a little bit different. I now have more of the city of Andover, so I'm reintroducing myself to my former constituents that many times I knocked on their doors as their mayor. So I looked forward to that, and I'm enjoying it. I have a little bit less of Coon Rapids, lost the precinct in Fridley, but picked up a precinct in Oak Grove, so I'm looking forward to the campaign this year. As I said, we had two children. Both of them are married now. My son is a teacher in the Anoka Hennepin School District, and my daughter works at General Mills, like I do. I've worked at General Mills now for 44 years. And I've enjoyed it. It has given me an understanding of the transportation issues that people face every single day when they have to go into the, go into the offices. Sometimes people talk about driving down into Minneapolis. We're talking about some of the work that we have to work on to get the suburb-to-suburb transportation issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike Gamash. All right. Question one, what is your background? How long you've lived in Anoka County? Family occupation, endorsements to date, and your connections to business? Tracy Strombeck.
Hi, thank you for having me. And thank you to the chamber for hosting and the fire station for hosting. I have lived in Andover my entire life for 52 years. I'm married to my husband Chad for 28 years, and he's an Andover original, just like myself. We have three grown children. My oldest son works for Anoka County, and he's also a fireman for the city of Ramsey. My son is the, my middle son is the only one that works for us. He's a welder. And my daughter will graduate in two weeks from Aveda Institute as an esthetician. And I am currently a park and rec commissioner for the city of Andover. I've also been, I am also a head election judge at the city and county levels. I'm also a past booster president on the high school realm for seven years. And I was a community volunteer before that. I've done Meals on Wheels. And I'm a firm believer in leaving things better for somebody else that comes behind me. I'm also a small business owner since 2004. I have applied for two endorsements and have not yet heard back from either, and I disregarded the rest that fell in my inbox. This is my first debate ever, so I'm kind of new to this. So I did not apply to the things that flooded in my inbox. I would rather get a step in and see what I'm doing before I decide what endorsement I want. And we do belong to the NFIB, and I need to stop.
Question two, if you are an incumbent, what is your biggest accomplishment? If you are a challenger, why are you running? And what would you do differently? We'll begin with Tracy.
I am running because there needs to be a fresh new voice in the seat for District Five. I do applaud my opponent for being a mayor and being involved in politics for 22 years. I think that's fantastic. However, I do think it's time for a fresh new voice and some eyes to step in. I actually do not support the North Star train. I think it's, it loses so much money, I just can't support that, and I will not vote for that. I do not want to extend it to St. Cloud as well. When cities come in and they develop, personally, I live in Andover for the rural feel. And I think as you move a little bit more north into the outer skirts, I don't see the need to bring urbanization to the far suburban areas. I'm not in agreement with that personally. And I know my opponent does support it and has supported that. And I will also support the Constitution of the United States. When, and my opponent has actually voted against that on May, in May of 2020, on an Anoka County resolution. And again, I am not a career politician. I've been a community volunteer for years, and I will do the very best job I can. I look at the big picture when making decisions, and I'm a very good steward of taxpayer dollars because those are so important, and I think votes are sacred as well. And I firmly believe in fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Question two, if you are an incumbent, what is your biggest accomplishment? If you are a challenger, why are you running?
When I was elected in 2018 to my second term, in 2019, I was appointed to the Chair of the Parks Committee. And one of the first meetings that we had was to find out that we had some issues with Chaminde Golf Course that needed to be addressed right away. So the Parks Committee began that process at our very first meeting, where we held a public forum to ask the questions, what was needed. And we began to put in a plan that was going to be a three-year plan to bring Chaminde back to profitability, actually. And we did that in two years. We got that done. We hired a new director out there. Mark Johnson's been doing a fantastic job of rebuilding the courses, not necessarily the infrastructure, but the amount of rounds that we are playing every days or every year. So we've got that back on track. Chaminde's looking great. The second biggest thing that we had at the Parks Committee was to rebuild Bunker Beach. It had been there for 30 years. We had some structural problems where the waves and the wave pool get produced were beginning to fall apart. We tried some minimal fixes, but we realized that we had to rebuild the entire wave pool. And we did it, we expanded it, we heated it. And in 2021, when we reopened, we had a record year. And some of that extra money that comes from those improvements at Chaminde and at the wave pool now can be placed back into the system, the park system, so that helps hold down levies moving forward.
Question three, if elected, what would you do or should the county board do differently, or I'm sorry, do to address inflation in a pending recession? We'll begin with Mike.
Well, as mayor through the 2000s, we faced a rather large recession. So this isn't going to be my first rodeo as how to cut budgets and how to keep the levy down. We did that in Andover. We did that by making some big decisions on where we can make some cuts. And we kept the levy relatively flat throughout most of that recession. So I know how to do that. It's not going to be easy. If this is truly going to be a recession in the regard of what happened in 2006, 2007, we're going to have some big decisions to make. I've done that before as a mayor. I can do that again. And I've been doing that as a county commissioner through the last three years. As a couple of my fellow commissioners have said, we've kept the levy flat. And it looks like we're going to be able to keep the levy flat again this time around if we have some money that we can spend in certain areas and still get the job done of what we need to get accomplished and yet keep the levy flat. And that's going to be huge regarding this upcoming couple of years if this recession does hit as they're saying it will. The inflation, we don't have much control over that. So the best thing that we can do is keeping the levy flat and then we're going to continue to do that.
If elected, what would you do, should the county board do, to address inflation in a pending recession? Tracy?
I'm going to echo everybody else that sat up here and obviously keep our tax base as low as we can. As an owner of a manufacturing business, we are generally the first to notice an impending recession. And I can tell you right now, the big companies, your John Deere's, Disney, and these are our customers, when they start to pull back and they don't release when they were supposed to release, it's an indicator. And that is going on right now. So with that being said, I am a, definitely going to look to make sure the taxes remain low. I would also look at the budget with a fresh set of eyes and see if there's any way we could save money in other areas. I would also, I don't know, I'm not usually nervous and I'm nervous. I would go through the current operating plan to see what savings can be generated. I would look at existing budgets with a new eye. And I know that my opponent is more of a let's build it and they will come type of, type of, you know, type of thinker. I am a little bit more fiscally conservative than that. While plans may look great, I tend to look at them and say, do we have the money for that? Is that really a great decision? Is that the direction we want to go? Thank you.
Question four, other than the economy, what's the biggest issue facing Anoka County businesses and residents for the next two years and your plan to address it?
For the next, some of the, some of the big issues that are coming up, what we have, obviously, we were talking about the jail, reconstruction of a new jail in Anoka, in the city of Anoka. And that was mentioned by the sheriff's candidates as well. Also, we have a 911 center that we're looking at putting in Andover, actually. We have a site there. It is something that is needed. We currently have our 911 center in the basement of the Anoka County building and it is cramped. And these people do a vital job every single day. So it's important that we look at this and get this project moving along. And of course, we understand the jail issues as well. The other one that I want to really focus on, and we've begun this now and it's going to be part of our budget this year, is a project to talk about our system and human resources. We had a human resources department that I was rather embarrassed of at the beginning when I first came in town as a county commissioner. I thought it should be more professional, it should be a new system. And now we're on the track to get that done so that it'll become more of a corporate-type system, as big businesses do all across our state and the cities, where you address issues so that you can bring in new employees, you can pay them the going rate, and you can also compete in the marketplace for those types of positions. It's important to keep the businesses or keep our services up to what's expected by our residents. And we can only do that if we have the right people in the right place.
Thank you. Question four, other than the economy, what's the biggest issue facing Anoka County businesses and residents for the next two years and your plan to address it? Tracy?
Thank you. Again, as a business owner, I know firsthand, my answer is workforce because finding employees is actually harder and harder as the years go by. And with that being said, I will piggyback a little bit on Mandy's answer. I had came up with an idea that I would do. I would actually try to implement a new idea that would possibly bridge and connect employers to employees using our workforce center. And there are times we have gone into the tech and there are times it has worked out and there's times that it's not. But being that I've been hands-on in this situation for 18 years, it is an area that I think as a county commissioner could be explored to a much greater degree. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give our District Five candidates a round of applause. Mike Gamash and Tracy Strombeck. And I will ask the District Six candidates, Dave Clark and Julie Jepson, to come to the front. This will be our last county commissioner race that we have this morning and then we will segue into the county attorney race. And we will ask questions at the end, so please come. So we'll begin with the first question. What is your background? How long you've lived in Anoka County? Family occupation and endorsements to date and your connections to business? And we'll begin with Dave Clark.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here today. Thank you to the chamber for putting this event together and SBM and to even our audience that might be watching at home or at work. For those that don't know me, I'm Dave Clark. My bride and I moved to Blaine in 1991. All four of our kids went through the public schools and graduated from Blaine High School. I had the honor to serve on the Blaine City Council for 20 years from 99 through 2019. And in that time, Blaine grew from about 45,000 people to about 65,000 people. So it's roughly a 40% increase in population. So as a city, you do not grow like that and you do not sustain that growth unless you're doing the right things. My career is in the private sector. So I'm currently a business development manager for a hand tool company. I've been with that company for 22 years. In all, I have, you know, 30-plus years of private sector experience, most of it in management. You know, I've even had my own small business for six years selling fireplaces and woodstoves. So when you combine my local government experience with my private sector experience, I think those are the qualifications that you'd want for somebody on the county board.
Thank you. Question one, what is your background? How long you've lived in Anoka County? Family occupation, endorsements to date and your connections to business? Julie?
Thanks, Lori. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today for the MetroNorth Chamber and for the Leadership Fund for putting this together. My name is Julie Jepson. I am currently on Blaine City Council halfway through my second term. My husband Nate and I moved to Blaine 18 years ago, a little over 18 years ago. We have an 18-year-old daughter who just graduated from Spring Lake Park High School, who is now going to George Washington University in Washington, DC. We also have a son, Aaron, who is 14, who just started his freshman year of high school on Tuesday, Spring Lake Park High School. Over the last 15 years, I've taken pride in living by the motto of Rotary, of service above self. For, and so I've immersed myself in the Blaine-Spring Lake Park community, providing services in a volunteer way. Over the last 10 years, I've led Stepping Stone Emergency Housing. I've led it with grace, dignity, transparency, and quality leadership that a nonprofit requires. I brought that organization at the start from a $250,000 budget to this year, a $2.5 million budget with a reserve of a little over $500,000. I am currently a member of the Ham Lake Chamber, the MetroNorth Chamber, the Anoka Area Chamber, a member of the Blaine-Ham Lake Rotary, as well as sitting on the Met Council's Transportation Advisory Board, North Metro TV Cable Commission, Twin Cities Gateway, the Public Advisory Committee for Trunk Highway 65, and I chair the state of Minnesota's Task Force on Shelter.
Thank you. District Six is an open seat, there is no incumbent. So simply tell us, why are you running? We'll begin with Julie Jepson.
So over the last 18 years that I've lived in this city, I have shown that I am very willing and capable of not only working inside a boardroom, but also very immersed inside the community as well. I don't, I'm willing to do the work and lead. And as a good leader, you need to guide, empower, define expectations rather than lead with dictating or mandating. I move from hope-tos and want-tos into action. Myself and my council colleagues had no choice over the last two years but to be laser-focused on Highway 65. And because of that determination and tenacity, we got almost $30 million in funding. We're waiting for some legislative earmarks for almost $13 million, which should be coming in the coming months, allowing us to start construction on Highway 65 as soon as next year. I show up, I'm consistent, and I actually do the work. It's really not that challenging, but you need a good leader who's willing to do that and I'm that leader.
Thank you. Please tell us why you are running, Dave Clark.
Thank you. You know, I'm running because I enjoy service. It's not about me, it's about serving other people and trying to make the community a great place. You know, I do want to talk about some accomplishments, you know, that, you know, as a city council member and serving on the city, we did, we had a lot of accomplishments to talk about, you know, the new quality of developments like the lakes and the TPC and Club West, the new businesses and the retail that we brought into this city that didn't exist when I moved in, such as the Village Shopping Center, National Marketplace, Lowe's, bringing a Target in. We brought a lot of businesses and services into this community. Probably my biggest accomplishment was during the Great Recession, 2009 through 2013, where we held the line on taxes and spending because the last thing you want to do in a recession, especially one that bad, is to take more out of people's pockets. Businesses, homeowners, people were struggling to stay afloat and government needed to do what we need, what we could do. On the professional side, you know, my biggest accomplishment would be a new product called the Turbo Shear that we developed, and that's a product line that drove sales and profits for the company for 10 years. I'm also very proud of a relationship that I developed with a major automotive distributor that because of that relationship and the business volume, we actually have kept a plant in Nebraska open with 60 people. So those are 60 jobs that have been saved because of the work that I've done.
Thank you. Question three, if elected, what would you do or should the county board do to address inflation in a pending recession? We'll begin with Dave Clark.
Well, at the county level, there's not a whole lot that the county board can do about a global economic problem. I mean, this is driven by COVID, the supply chain disruptions that occurred as a result of COVID and that we're still dealing with. You know, we have, you know, workforce issues going on, you've got government spending, lots of new money being pumped into the economy. You know, we've been lax on our, the Federal Reserve has been lax on raising interest rates to curb inflation even when the signs were there. Really, the only thing that the county board can do is take care of its own backyard, is to keep a lid on taxes and spending and not put an additional burden on businesses. Businesses, you know, you're seeing increased costs from fuel costs to attracting and retaining employees, you know, health insurance costs, even garbage cost. Your costs are going up. And the last thing that businesses need during an inflationary period is a cost increase from their government.
Question three, if elected, what would you do, should the county board do, to address inflation in a pending recession? Julie Jepson.
We can support our businesses by being friendly without overburdening them through taxation and regulation, attracting and retaining businesses that are here and encouraging those, our communities to continue growing and being prosperous while closely watching tax dollars and respecting taxpayers, all the while maintaining a high level of services. An additional way to do that is to continue partnerships within the community. Partnerships are the key to success. As an example, when I started at Stepping Stone 10 years ago, I knew that we could not have a successful nonprofit here in this community without all community involvement, community involvement from local and state governments, businesses, individuals, faith groups, civic groups. It's essential that partnerships remove the burden from as many individuals as possible and that's the only way it's going to happen. Building healthy and reasonable reserves, spending reserves, creating a policy on when those reserves should be spent and how they should be spent. It's the most honest and transparent and respectful way of treating hard-earned taxpayer dollars. In addition, we can play a pivotal role. Commissioner Broadstead talked about AC RED, Anoka County Regional Economic Development Group, a very powerful group that if focused on and given the support it needs, can do amazing things in partnerships with the local Anoka County cities.
Question four, other than the economy, what's the biggest issue facing Anoka County businesses and residents for the next two years and your plan to address it? Julie Jepson.
So a lot of conversation has been about workforce. I feel like workforce is really part of the economy, so I'm going to go in a little bit of a different direction. And for me, it's roads. 100% without a doubt, it's roads. And a big spotlight on Highway 65, as Commissioner Look said, is right out this front door here. We have been painfully aware over the last few years, even in the last two weeks, of the horrible deaths and accidents that are happening on that road and on our city streets. We cannot ignore them anymore. I went to Washington, DC with my colleague in May to advocate with legislators to get funding for that road. We are laser-focused on that, how that needs to change, when it needs to change because there's far too many deaths and way too many accidents. And those deaths and those accidents not just impact the people that it's happening to, it impacts the local community and it really impacts our public servants, the EMTs that are helping, the fire department that's helping, the police department that's helping. And for those public servants, it is, it is just too much anymore and it's, and it needs to end.
Question four, other than the economy, what's the biggest issue facing Anoka County businesses and residents for the next two years and your plan to address it? Dave Clark.
Thank you. You know, I'll start off talking about, you know, the biggest thing is workforce. You know, it's being able to find and keep employees. You know, that's a big deal, you know, and I think the work we're doing with the training center, you know, the AC RED, I think is good too. But I also want to touch on Highway 65 and transportation, you know, because to say that Highway 65 has been ignored is a mischaracterization and an injustice to people that have been working on Highway 65. When I got, first got on the council, Highway 65 was at a level of service F. And MINDOT does not give a road a lower grade. While I was on the council, we put in the three overpass projects at 121st, 125th, and 129th. We built frontage roads like Davenport and Ulysses so you don't have to go on Highway 65. And we had, and we took out some uncontrolled intersections which improved safety and saved lives. We, the, there's been a Highway 65 corridor coalition that's been in progress for many, many years and trying to get, you know, we've had plans come forward. They weren't necessarily the best plans in the world. I like the plan that's come forward, that everybody that's worked on it, I like the plan, you should be commended on it. But to say that it's been ignored is, I would strongly disagree with that statement.
Thank you. Let's give our District Six candidates a round of applause. Dave Clark and Julie Jepson.